Good evening, Men One. Thank you for being here. Today is August 30th, 2023. Yeah, it is approximately 6 o'clock. We're here for our special call meeting today. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask tonight if Commissioner Mason, if you will lead us in our invocation, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Edwards, if you will lead us in our pledge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. God, we thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you're about to do. God, we just bless your name and praise your name and give you all the honor and the glory. God, we ask that as we move forward into this special call meeting, God, that you would go with us, be with us. Uh, God, we ask that you would allow your presence, uh, and your Holy Spirit to fill this place, uh, God, so that your will will be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Harold Cooper. Huh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members.
Well, hold on one second. Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Jackie, I have a statement that she would like to read. Um, a statement that she's been requested to read from-
Yeah, on Bedford District 4.
This is a, a letter from Commissioner J.C. Henderson, District 4 Commissioner of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, request to cancel Nelson Heights Community Center lease to the Newton County Board of Commissioners, requesting this to be read into the record. As I think everyone is aware, the Newton County Board of Commissioners recently spent $15,000 to audit the $45,000 budget of the Nelson Heights Community Center. The audit was intended to target me and my family and our involvement with the center. The board members who authorized the audit hoped to find evidence of wrongdoing by me and my family. The audit did not find evidence of us mishandling money, but to no one's surprise showed that we are not accountants or bookkeepers. Frankly, the burden of supervising and maintain- maintaining the operations of the center and the burden of dealing with frequent attempts over the years to harm our reputation have led us to conclude it would be best for us to cancel the outstanding lease between Newton County and the Nelson Heights Community Center and turn over responsibility for funding, maintenance, and operations of the center to the county. Please accept this letter as a request from me as District Commissioner and the Board of Directors of Nelson Heights to cancel the lease when the county is ready to assume operations of the center. Thank you in advance for your help. J.C. Henderson.
Mr. Jackie, having said that, I recuse myself. Commissioners, with that being said, we can either, um, I can either ask for a motion or we can go through the, um, we can go through the information tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
If you like to, if you would like to, um, put a motion on the floor at this time, you can.
Mr. Chairman, I, I spoke to the county attorney because agenda just came out today and citizen comments was left off of that agenda. It just came out probably like around 11, 10, 11 o'clock ago, Ms. Jackie, and citizen comments was left off, and you have all these residents that are here, and I know we as the elected officials would not want to silence the residents who are in support or against. So you have all these individuals here and they don't have an opportunity to speak, especially on something that we're, we're gonna vote on, it's so big of its magnitude, and as Commissioner Henderson stated how it affected his family and things the county has done. So I believe that the people of Newton County should be able to have a voice and speak on what's occurring today.
Um, was that intended to be-
Yes, my, my motion is to open, to add to the agenda, citizens' comments, so that the citizens of Newton County can voice and speak in regards to this matter that's on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. That motion failed for lack of support. Now, um, is there a motion that would like to be on the floor, or would you like the county manager to proceed forward? Would you like to make a motion?
Motion as stated by the county clerk's verbiage in Mr. and Commissioner Henderson's letter.
Is there a second? There, so, go ahead, Patrick.
Clarify, are you making a motion to terminate the lease?
I am.
Is there a second?
I'll say, based on, uh, Mr. Henderson's request to terminate the lease.
Thank you. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and the second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Our Commissioner Sanders.
As we have witnessed in over the years, I know I'm the new one that's on the board, and being on this board since 2021, I have seen the magnitude of what the county has done. I read documents, I base stuff on facts, where I know the, things have been put out there, but I do stuff on facts. I've seen the documents. There was a statement that we gave Commissioner Henderson that was last meeting, and it was kind of confusing to the residents because I received a lot of calls, and then I went and did my research as well, that we gave Commissioner Henderson $300,000. So I went and did that research, and I said, Brittany, I need to find out about this statement, and I have residents that are calling me saying that we just gave Commissioner Henderson $300,000. And you know what I found out that was? That was over the course of years that he has been with Nelson Heights. It was 12 years, you guys. $300,000. You see how stuff starts? When you don't go through the research and the facts are not there? That was put out there, and I got so many calls from people thinking that this board just gave him $300,000 and he spent it frivolously. I get it why he wants to just say, forget it. It's sad because that's our kids. It's sad. It's sad how our government operates, and I speak on it all the time, that's why I'm constantly attacked. And I speak and I'm gonna hold you accountable. I don't care who it is. I'm gonna hold you accountable. I don't care if it's the President of the United States. I'm gonna hold you accountable, and I expect the residents to hold me accountable. And it's sad that we would do something of this magnitude. The attorney sat here last week and said, I'm gonna get with you, Mr. Henderson, and we gonna make sure that document is correct. Found out she never called. Then, we found out the last meeting that the, that the finance director had that document for almost over two months. And that document could have been rectified, cleared, and, and completed before it even came to the commissioners. The commissioners never saw it until two and a half months later. And that's when you saw us up here, and that's why all that ruckus was caused here last meeting, August 15th, a document that we just saw that day. And it'd been in the county hands for two and a half months. And if there was any issue, he gave it to the finance director to look over and review it to see if anything was wrong with the document. And they never came back and said anything was wrong with the document. Yes, that was correct, Ms. Queen. Yes, they did. And, and our finance director sat up here and said that, you could pull the tapes. I only speak on facts. I'm not gonna speak on fiction. I could pull every, people call me the receipt commissioner, and I will pull the receipt in a minute. And I expect every, every resident in this county, your next two words should be open records. Open record Newton County to death. Everything that you wanna know, do, and open records, find out for yourself. It's kinda like when you be in church and you hear the word from the pastor, but they say you still gotta go home and, and know it for yourself. Open records this county, because there's too much stuff and corruption and things that they're doing just to nitpick people. It's ridiculous, and it needs to stop, and the only people can stop that is y'all right here. You can stop it, and it's time out for it. Thank you.
Commissioner, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, obviously, I made the motion um, to use the verbiage in the letter Commissioner Hinder- Henderson rendered or has given to the, the commissioners and signed, J.C. Henderson. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure he has the authority to do that. If he, if he does not, if he has zero to do with the, the Community Center and the Community Center, J.C., Nelson Heights Community Center, Inc., or whatever, um, like he's told us he did, he hasn't, then I'm not so sure he has the ability or the authority to do this on behalf of that board. Um, the other thing is, uh, is a comment, is another comment. We, $15,000 on an audit and for a $45,000 budget, and, uh, we, we never got, we, we never got the, the audit, um, that I recall. We got a review, but we never got a full audit. So, um, uh, we recently spent $15,000 to audit the $45,000 budget. That's a, that's a misstatement. We never got a audit on that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Cooper, uh, county manager, to, um, move forward with providing the information. That way, um, it can't be said that the county didn't provide the information. So, um, Commissioner Cooper, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper, if you can, please, um, provide your findings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, board members and citizens, uh, this report is gonna be twofold because I'm gonna yield to our attorney, Patrick Jockstatter, as well, so that he can expound on it. Since the inception and since, uh, my first day here, the topic of discussions will all be, always be revolving around the three Ps, and today we're gonna talk about the processes in relationship to the Nelson Heights lease agreement with Newton County. We're gonna do a lease review and some of the concerns that was raised as a result of the lease and alleged subleasing that was taking place. Before we get into the logistics of the issue, I think it's important that we look at the dates that are identified here on this slide. May 18th, 2021, an appropriations policy was adopted by the Board of Commissioners. On June 28th, 2022, the Board approved the resolution which outlined the organization selected for appropriations as well as requiring a full and complete audit for nonprofits. August 2nd, 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved a motion to pay for the audits of the nonprofit institutions, with Nelson Heights being one of them. On March 17th, 2023, Sands Virtual Enterprise returned the attempted audit results performed on behalf of Nelson Heights. As a result of that, on, during the April 18th Board of Commissioners meeting, a motion was made to extend Nelson Heights a 60-day grace period as they work towards improving their books and their practices on a whole as a result of the insufficient information that they provided Sands Virtual Enterprise, because Sands could not perform the comprehensive audit that was mandated. May 25th, I was 17 days old on the job, and I extended an invite to Councilman Henderson. Uh, we were scheduled to meet at 9:00 a.m., but unfortunately, he could not make it. Uh, he was a no-call, no-show, but I had opportunity to meet with, uh, Washington Street Nonprofit, and I also had opportunity to, uh, attend a town hall with Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Cowan about Spring Hill Park, Community Park. On August 15th, as you all well know, uh, the Nelson Heights representative by way of Councilman Henderson reported here and provided an update procedural manual. That manual effective date was June 1st. However, we got first notice of that manual July 1st, so it was in effect 30 days prior to us receiving it. And also, I wanna make sure that people understand when nonprofits are eliciting appropriations from an entity, we would compromise the process if we assist these nonprofits or any organization in terms of, you know, doing a comprehensive review of their books, so on and so forth. So, in an effort to avoid scrutiny and to avoid compromising the integrity of the process, it was not the county's job to do a review, if you will, of the books of Nelson Heights. Let's look at the lease agreement. Signed in existence August 1st, 2017, there was a 10-year lease agreement. The lease was signed by Chairman Bain in his capacity as a Newton County official, and it was also signed by Commissioner J.C. Henderson in his capacity at the time as the chairman of Nelson Heights Community Center. It was attested by Clerk Jackie Smith and officially witnessed, unofficially witnessed, I should say, by Ms. Kennedy and notarized by Ms. Connor. The topic of discussion today in reference to the alleged lease violation is related to two provisions in the lease agreement. The lease agreement is 28 pages, and it outlines 28 provisions, but today we're gonna focus on provisions 4A and 11. Let's look at 4A, the use of property. Leasee shall use the property exclusively for the purpose of maintaining and operating a nonprofit community center. The operative word there is exclusive, exclusively. Assignment and subleasing, provision 11. This agreement may not be assigned or transferred at any time by the leasee to anyone without the prior written consent of the lease sir. Operative term there, prior written consent of the lease sir. The alleged sublease activity. During the week of August 21st, a representative from Unfolding Faith, Inc., Dominion Leadership Academy, contacted the county manager's office. They alleged and provided documentation for the following. A correspondent that was a signed month-to-month lease agreement stating that they would be required to pay $2,000 a month effective February 15th, 2023. The date on that document was January 30th, 2023, and the alleged signature on the document was from Councilman Anthony Henderson. There were copies of checks showing payments of rent from Dominion Leadership Academy to Nelson Heights throughout 2022 and 2023 totaling $6,650. This individual provided a total of eight copied checks, which amounted to $10,675. There was a copy of a check showing payment of rent and utilities from Unfolding Faith Dominion Leadership Academy to Nelson Heights showing payment in the month of February 2022 totaling $2,025. There was a copy of a check showing payment of fees to operate a summer camp from Unfolding Faith Dominion Leadership Academy to Nelson Heights in June of 2023. If substantiated, this would be in violation of provisions 4 and 11 of the lease that we referenced. Let's look at a timeline of events pertaining to this month, August 2023. August 7th, Clerk Smith, at the request of Commissioner Henderson, sent an email to our Building and Facility Maintenance Director, Mr. Jason Johnson, to change the locks at the Nelson Heights Community Center. This information was not shared to leadership, in particular county manager's leadership, until after the fact. On August 15th, as stated, uh, a representative from Nelson Heights Councilman Henderson came here to present the operating procedures manual. On August 18th, I sent a correspondent to Councilman Henderson in an effort to meet with him to discuss some of the concerns and issues that were raised on August 15th. August 21st, a representative from Dominion Leadership Academy by the name of Ms. Freeman contacted the county manager's office to share concerns, including that Commissioner Henderson visited Nelson Heights earlier that day to inform her that she could no longer use the facility with her programming. August 22nd, Ms. Freeman emailed documentation to the county manager. This documentation was then forwarded to the county attorney. August 22nd, later that day, Ms. Freeman contacted the county manager and informed me that the locksmith had arrived to change the locks while she was holding her class sessions, if you will. August 23rd, Ms. Freeman arrived to Nelson Heights with the students, and she was unable to gain entry to the building. Students were locked outside without access to air conditioning and bathroom facilities. August 24th, the county attorney issued an opinion to the chairman, the commissioners, and the county manager regarding this matter. Here you have samples of the documentation that was provided to the county manager's office. The first check dated February 24th, 2022 in the amount of $2,025, and it's paid to the order of Nelson Heights for building and rental utilities. November 29th, 2022, paid to the order of Nelson Heights in the amount of $550 for recreational center rental. March 3rd, 2023, Nelson Heights Community Center paid to the order of, in the amount of $2,000 for a community center rental. April 30th, 2023, Nelson Heights Community Center paid in the amount of $2,000 for rental. And if you look to the left of the screen, you'll see a correspondent to Mrs. Aquina Freeman, who was the CEO of Dominion Leadership Academy, and it clearly states that, and it's dated January 30th, that her month-to-month lease of the Nelson Heights Community Center payment will be increased to $2,000 effective February 15th, 2023, and it's allegedly signed by Councilman Anthony Henderson. At this time, I'm gonna yield to Attorney Patrick Jockstatter for his opinion and recommendations.
Good evening. So to follow up on the county manager's comments, I wanted to sort of direct your attention to the lease. Um, there's a couple of provisions of the lease I want you to, to bear in mind. Um, first of all, section 4A of the lease, which was in the presentation before, provides that the less C, being the tenant, shall use the property exclusively for the purpose of maintaining and operating a nonprofit community center. As you've heard, it's pretty clear that the center had been subleased to this organization called Dominion Leadership Academy, which purports to be either a school or a daycare center. It's a little unclear to me which one, but in either event, that's not a community center that the lease contemplates. The lease also provides that the lease can be terminated immediately in the event any of the use restrictions set forth in section 4, which is a section I just read to you, are violated. It is my opinion that the sublease to the school and the use of the property as the school slash daycare center for a fee violates section 4 being the use restriction and authorizes this board, the county, to terminate the lease immediately. The second thing I wanna bring your attention to is, is section 11 of the lease, which prohibits the assignment of the lease, which means the sublease of the property, the assignment of the possessory right to the lease without the written consent of the lender. Again, I don't think there's any question that the property's been subleased to Dominion Leadership Academy. That was done without notice to or consent of the county, and that likewise authorizes the county to declare a breach. Now, what the lease says with respect to that is you can declare a breach, give the tenant notice, and the tenant has an opportunity to cure that breach by essentially terminating the lease and removing the tenant. Lastly, I wanna bring your attention to the section of the lease, which is section 11B, which authorizes the county to terminate the lease agreement for any reason with 60 days' notice. Um, as I indicated in my, my recommendation to this board, it's my opinion that the lease has been terminated or has been breached by the authorization from Nelson Heights Community Services, Inc. to utilize the lease, the property for a school slash daycare center. That authorizes the immediate termination of the lease. It's also my, my opinion that based on the totality of the circumstances that I don't wanna go through again, but the circumstances and the facts that the county manager related to you certainly would justify the board to terminate the lease for convenience, which is the 60-day notice provision. I think you have the right to exercise your rights under either of those provisions, and it is my recommendation that you do so. This was a, this is a, this use restriction was a material provision of the lease. It's not just as an aside. It is my understanding that the entire purpose for leasing this property to Nelson Heights was to provide a community center. To have it then used as a private school slash daycare center, in my mind, violates the terms of the lease. Now, given the letter that you've got today, which, which I would agree is not necessarily enforceable on behalf of Nelson Heights, but given the letter that you have in front of you today, I, I think it seems like the entity, the tenant entity perhaps, has no objection to a termination of the lease. Um, with all of those things said, again, it was already my recommendation that you terminate the lease. It remains my recommendation to terminate the lease. Now, whether you do so immediately, which would mean first thing in the morning, we send a notice and the lease is terminated at that moment, or whether you give 60 days' notice, that is entirely up to you. Um, I think it, I think that decision is, is, that is a pure business decision for this entity to make. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I do wanna make one final comment. My recommendation to terminate the lease is based exclusively upon the language of the lease. I am not relying upon findings or non-findings in the audit report or whatever we wanted to call that report. Um, I'm not relying upon any of those other things. In my mind, the relationship between Nelson Heights Community Services and Dominion Leadership Academy is precisely the relationship that triggers the termination of the lease. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Um, Patrick, um, we're gonna get a motion on the floor, the correct motion.
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Edwards if he would like to amend his emotion, amend his motion.
Mr. Chairman, no, no offense, but based on parliamentary procedure, the only individuals that enter discussion are your officials, your commissioners, and I had my hand up for discussion before our county manager spoke, and Patrick said it was, discussion was not over. So once the county manager finishes, I'll be able to say my discussion. My hand was up.
So Commissioner Sanders, discussion will come back around, but right now, we don't have a official emotion, official motion on the floor. The motion that Commissioner Edwards made because of the letter that Commissioner Henderson presented um, stands not to be in effect. So, in order for us to get discussion on the floor, I'm gonna ask for a motion so we can get discussion on the floor. And with that being said, I ask for a motion to be made so-
Mr. Chairman, we were currently in discussion. That's why you called on me first.
Patrick, can you please clean this up, please? Thank you. You gotta get a motion on the floor.
We were currently in discussion. Can you please, because you just informed me, and this came from the county manager. That's why I can't, brought it back up. He said once I was, once our county manager finishes, I mean, I'm sorry, county attorney, I was able to speak. That's the only reason why I'm saying that, Mr. Chairman. It came from our legal advisor right here.
So I think it makes sense to make clear what the motion is. My understanding was that Commissioner Edwards withdrew his motion, which would start the process over, but there still will be opportunity for discussion. So I think it might make sense if Commissioner Edwards or anyone else wants to make a motion.
At this time, I seek that we get an appropriate mo- a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, they already, they already did.
That was done, yeah.
I'd like to amend my motion to read. Motion to terminate the lease immediately between Newton County, uh, between Nelson Heights Community Services and Newton County Board of Commissioners for breach of terms of the contract.
Is there a second? Thank you, sir. Motion been made by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Now, discussion. Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. First, I have a question for Patrick. How long has Gerard and Davis been with the county?
Um, I think since 2015 or 16, 2016, I'm told.
So, based on your evidence, how long has that church been with Nelson Heights?
It is my understanding that Dominion-
No, not Dominion is the school.
The Dominion School is the-
Not the school. You mentioned two. There was two organizations that our county manager mentioned. It was that two leases. Now, we're talking about Dominion School that was just recent.
They're, they're one of the same.
Okay. There is a church that's, that was also there as well that's been there from the beginning.
I don't know anything about the church.
Okay, so, now let me go back to that. I have a recording that I will- I have a recording that I would like to play, that's from the owner of Dominion, and I would like to play that.
Marcelo Bain, the Lord Care of Sunday, Academy Commissioner, you went over to Arroyo Cousins, you looked at it and caused two murders. And so, you told me, said, they said, come on over here. And we talked about it, and I said, why didn't you tell me they told you to come over here?
Yeah, they referred me to you. They referred me to you, they said, call the commissioner. So, we weren't on any type of bad thing, anything.
For how long? How long for you supposed to be here?
Initially, we didn't, we never set a timeframe, but initially, it was during the time our building was gonna get remodeled. Now, if y'all are familiar with Sigmund Road, do y'all know where the Old Knights Academy is?
I know where that's at.
Okay. The Old Knights Academy. I went into a contract with that lady, she ended up not being able to get the building fixed up and remodeled in time. When the fire department comes in, which I talked to the commissioner several times, where's the fire paperwork and stuff like, they wanna make sure that the kids are safe. So, she could not get the building up to cold, sir. That's how I ended up calling down there to the Board of Commissioners, speaking to them, I was trying, actually looking into Cousins.
Who were you speaking to?
Mr. Latanya Hemp, and I think Cohen, I was, they were sending me around to the different commissioners in the county to see if they would approve me getting the old Cousins building. But the old Cousins building needs a lot of work, and it's very outdated, so that's how I ended up getting with him.
And they told you to come over here? And I think it was Ronnie, you told me it was Ronnie, it was Marcelo Bain, and it was uh...
They were Cohen, and I was speaking to Latanya Hemp, which is I think the front desk.
Demont Mason.
Yeah, because they, the crazy thing about this is...
But I didn't know!
They didn't even, they didn't even have for the commissioners.
No, they told me to call the ones in this area.
But that ain't, that ain't how the county worked, though.
That's what Mr. Latanya Hemp was, that's how I got in contact.
But let me tell you, Latanya Hemp gave you bad information, because I'm just, it's just educational piece, so you're knowing the future, and when you're dealing with any other county, whether it's Newton, Rockdale, Henry, whatever, let me tell you.
Yes, she's sitting in the audience.
Now, what's her name?
Ms. Denise Weig.
Oh, okay.
It had to come before the board...
Commissioner Henderson as well.
That's what I'm trying to take you down. We had a deal, we had an agreement outside of that.
But see, but...
So, what you're hearing is that, that the owner said that the county referred her to Commissioner Henderson, because she said that she was supposed to get the Cousins building. So, Commissioner Henderson didn't even know, the lady never even called him originally to be a part of Nelson Heights. She said she needed a place immediately. Now, that, now, we don't know how, that came from the owner, the person that we're talking about right now, Ms. from Dominion, whatever, Dominion, whatever the name of that building. That came directly from her mouth. That's why I keep saying, there's a lot going on that you guys are not aware of. That came directly from the owner. Going back over the information, Commissioner Edwards said something about the audit. Commissioner Henderson did a review, and we voted to pay for everyone's audit. Washington Street and Nelson Heights invoice for the audit has been sitting in the finance director's office and has not been paid. So you cannot move forward with an audit if you don't pay the auditor. So that's why the audit was not completed, so there was not an audit. When they came before us to do a review, there were directives given. Brittany, you can pull the actual meeting from August 15th, Brittany stood here, and Mr. Cooper said it was July, but Brittany stood here and said she got that document in June, which when it was due. So I don't know who's telling the truth or not, I can't say who's what, maybe I got dates confused, but that's what was stated at the last meeting, you can pull that recording. And also, we was given, Nelson Heights was given a directive to turn those documents in. Again, it's been sitting with the county for two months, and this is the issues I have. As I just, the reason why I asked Gerard and Davis how long they have been with us. Commissioner Henderson, when he was told back in 2018, everything would be okay as long as he takes steps away from the board, and that's why it was functioning that way. That came from the county, that didn't come from Elena Sanders. That came from the county. I do my research. I do my research. And that's the problem that I have, is that things are done behind the scenes. Now, if the board wants to vote to take the lease, that's the board's right prerogative and privilege, but we gonna put the information out there. We gonna tell the truth. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that passes 3-1. I seek a motion that we adjourn, please.
No motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? If it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, all in favor, stand adjourned.